From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Welcome to the afternoon session of this meeting of the Board of Supervisors on the 21st day of August 2018. The Board will reconvene. Madam Kirk, would you please, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
We're going to hear a report on actions taken in closed session first, but this is my first opportunity to formally congratulate Margot Rezon for her appointment as our new Kern County Council. So Ms. Rezon, we're happy to have you with us and grateful that you're committed to staying with the county and being our county council. Would you like to, before you give us a report on closed session, would you like to make any comments about your new position?
Thank you Chairman, members of the Board. First, I'd like to thank you for appointing me as the next county council. As I think I said during my interview, I have always been so proud to work for the office of the county council and never more so than I am right now. I'm honored to have been selected for this position and I recognize the responsibilities that accompany it. I will strive to uphold the strong tradition of providing excellent legal advice to your Board and county departments and agencies. I look forward to working with each of you. I'm excited to forge stronger relationships with other department heads and work with each to accomplish the missions you set for their department. I'm grateful to be a member of a dedicated, supportive, and talented department and look forward to helping each member of the county council's office and the risk management department shine. I'm also grateful to Mark, that Mark Nations isn't retiring until December and I plan to learn as much from him as possible. I can't believe my luck in getting to be tutored for him, by him for a few more months. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm so very excited to be embarking on this next phase of my career. And I can also report that, as you know, the Board did meet in closed session, but there is nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Happy to have you with us.
Thank you.
We're going to deal with our consent agenda first. Consent items are indicated on our agenda with a CA just above the item number. Consent items are considered to be routine in nature by staff and they are therefore put on the consent agenda and generally are voted for all at once. So I'm going to go through what those consent items are and if any member of the public has a question about one of those items, I'll give you an opportunity in a moment to ask a question about that. Beginning on page two of the afternoon agenda, items numbers three and four are on consent. On page three, all the items five through eight. On page four, all the items nine through 15. On page five, items 16, 17, and 18, and then 20 and 21. Item 19 is not on consent. On page eight, I'm sorry, on page six, all the items 22 through 25. On page seven, items number 26 and 27 are on consent. Item number 28 is not on consent. There's a typo in the printed version. The online version indicates it not being on consent, but just to clarify any of you that are here that might wonder, item number 28 is not on consent. Then items 29 through 33 on page seven are on consent. And then on page eight, the remaining items 34 through 40 are on consent. So are there any members of the public that have a question about a consent item this morning or this afternoon? I don't see anyone. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second by Supervisor Couch. Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. Item number one in the afternoon agenda is an opportunity for the public to talk to us about items that are not otherwise on our agenda. I'm going to defer that till the end of this afternoon's meeting and we'll all come back to that item before we close. Item number two is an opportunity for the Board members, members of the Board of Supervisors to give a report or make a comment. Does anybody wish to say anything before we proceed? Thank you. Then we'll move on to item number 19. This is a report regarding construction and maintenance of Kern County road infrastructure. It's kind of an update by Craig Pope, who is our Director of Public Works. And then after he has finished his report, I'm going to ask the Parks Department or the General Services Parks Division if they might make a few comments to us as well. So Mr. Pope, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Today's report, infrastructure report number one, it started out to do a full report on all the infrastructure, got way too big, way too fast, so I'm going to be coming back with several different ones. Future ones will be Calianni Creek flooding, CSA 71 sewer, we're going to be looking for some new policy out there. SB 1383, it's a solid waste issue that's going to change our lives here. SB 1, Prop 6, has to do with transportation funding and just code enforcement. We look into the Board for some direction on a level of service on that. So those will be upcoming reports. This report also, I hope to bring some light to concerns that have been voiced over the last three to six months from people that have talked about below par infrastructure in their neighborhoods. This is curb, gutter, sidewalk, drainage, parks, not enough road maintenance, transportation or transparent selection process of road maintenance. These are things I hope to bring a little light to. But before we get into the road system, I want to talk a little bit about our history of Kern County and how people got here and how some of these communities got built that we're dealing with. 1850s, it's a spinoff of the gold rush. We had mining show up in Kern County. Inukahn, Ransburg, Havila, Boron, all started at about that point in time. 1890s, another boom, oil boom this time. Oil Dale Taft, Maricopa, Bakersfield, Fellows, Tutman, all sprang into being. That's really where the city of Bakersfield got its start. And then in the 1930s, the Dust Bowl, where the migrants coming from Oklahoma, New Mexico, Texas came in and formed the communities, the farming communities at this point, Rexland Acres, Lamont, Arvin, Pumpkin Center, Panama, and Weed Patch. So we have communities that weren't master planned, would be the best way of putting it. We had no subdivision standards at that point. Over 100,000 people just merged into Kern County in under 40 years, just set up and started living. Limited paved roads, that's a very limited paved roads. Limited sewer systems. We still struggle with many of our communities in the sewer systems. No sanitary landfills, just dumping grounds. Actually, I mean, I still remember all the burn dumps that were, people had in their neighborhood. You just piled it up and somebody would light it on fire every now and then. We're still dealing with those. We have over 50 that we have to tend and remediate. No drainage systems. It just didn't rain here enough for them to really think drainage was an issue, but it truly is. In 1883, the first water system was built, but water is going to be our biggest challenge that we face in this community. So let's roll now to the topic of the day, Kern County road system. Our county is responsible for 3,300 miles of county-maintained roads. That's our responsibility, county's responsibility, public's responsibility to maintain those roads. We probably have that many more of roads that are, belong to private individuals. They're not our responsibility, but we have at least over 3,000 miles of known roads, dirt roads, some of them paved, that are not our responsibility. So two challenges to the road fund, improvements to the system. In other words, those communities that got built before subdivision standards are crying out for improvement. And then maintenance of our existing roads. Those roads that are our responsibility, our legal responsibility, how do we maintain them? Let's talk about the first challenge, the improvements needed to the system. In other words, those roads that we have out there, but they're just deficient. Many people consider them deficient. Pedestrian safety, drainage, curb, gutter, sidewalk, widening, they just want more. They're the cry out time and again by communities and individuals that they want their streets to be brought up to current standards. These are costly improvements. Retrofiting is always more expensive than just building fresh, at two to three times as much. Utilities need to be relocated. Property owner improvements such as fences and whatnot need to be relocated. Drainage infrastructure, then you're tearing up the road, going into and having to rebuild roads and things like that. So when we put in curb and gutter in an existing neighborhood, we're talking about a million dollars a mile. And paving a dirt road, it's about a million dollars a mile also. So those improvements are extremely expensive. People always ask me, why do we spend all our money on the new development? Why is the county out there building roads for the new development, ignoring the existing ones? We don't. The answer is plain and simple. We do not do that. That is upon the developer to do. The developer has to come and build to current standards and the cost of these improvements, they don't just bear them because they're nice. These costs are divided up and put on their homes. And then people go, well, what about their streetlights, the residential areas with streetlights? Those streetlights are covered under CSAs. In other words, they show up, the costs of maintaining and lighting them are part of their tax bill. So what are we doing, Kern County, to try and help those communities? In Public Works, we start what we call the Advanced Planning Section. And this is a group that goes, has community meetings, takes input from the community, and takes information together and applies for grants. We've got active transportation program, congestion mitigation, RSTP, Regional Surface Transportation, Hazard Safety Improvement Program, Community Development Block Grant. All these things, we're constantly looking for the opportunity to take that which we are deficient in and try and stick it into a grant. And we've been very successful. Community engagement, from 2015 to 2018, just three years, we've had 65 community meetings. We've had surveys that six, over 6,000 residents have turned in. We asked them to fill it out, what do they see is their need in their community? We take into account accident analysis, looking at trends for hotspots and deficiencies in infrastructure. We map it out. We use all this information and apply for grants. And we've been very successful. Over the last 10 years, we've brought in over $127 million worth of grants to try and improve mostly those communities that are deficient to today's standards. That's how we're helping them. We go out and we gather information from the public, we gather information from accident and infrastructure deficiency, put these grants together, and are doing well with it. We're averaging better than 12 million a year. We just put in another request for 24 million total of different grants out there. And maybe we can get...
Hold on just a second. Supervisor Scrivner has a question.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, Craig, but I didn't, I didn't, or Mr. Pope, but I didn't want you to go, go past that point without us trying to put a finer point on it. You basically said that, you know, this is the way in which we address those parts of the county that are deficient. Another way, we've had folks come in that are asking us to put more resources into, into certain parts of the county that are, that, the allegation is they've been, they've been neglected over the years. And so I just, I wanted you to try to address that in the scope of this report. I think that part of why you put this report together was prompted by some of those types of comments. And so we have these areas that we've inherited from our forefathers, so to speak, and now we're going in and trying to bring them up to today's standards. And it's extremely expensive, but this is the way in which we've tried to do that is through grants because our other revenue streams, which as your report will go on and describe, they're nowhere near what we would need. They don't even help us to maintain what we have, much less go in, or rather, they don't allow us to properly maintain what we have, but rather, we have to go and find grants in order to do so, so.
You're right, you're right on the target, right there. That's exactly the point of the discussion today. We are having some success. It's not enough. When they say there are deficiencies they'd like taken care of, we agree. I mean, there is a lot of need out there, but the amount of money we're trying to find, we're very busy. We're trying as hard as we know how to, to find additional funding to take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Another option out there, and we've had this happen about, I'm going to say every four or five years, a neighborhood will come to us and say they want their roads maintained by the county. And there are a number of neighborhoods out there that are paved and they were billed as private subdivisions and whatnot, but they realize maintaining a road is a very expensive proposition and it's very hard for a community to pull the money together to do that. So what the homeowners have formed, CSAs, County Service Areas, they either build the roadways if it's dirt, or they bring their roads up to county standards. And then when they do that, we accept them into the maintenance system and they're ours forever. Forever is a very long time, very expensive proposition, but that's something that we do. And further discussions when we get into transportation funding, not today, we'll ask, is that the best decision we can make? Just a shameless plug here for our advanced planning team, walkkern.com, and you've got to put the dot com on it or you end up at the south of Wales at a little city. Walkkern.com is a wonderful website that talks about all the projects we have achieved and the future, the ones we're applying for, and it's a great tool to see what we've been up to. Our second challenge is to maintain the existing roads that we are legally obligated to maintain. We've taken them into the county system. They're ours. We have to maintain them. And maintenance means more than just potholes. It's pavement markings, street signs, shoulder maintenance, signals, everything else. And everything else falls under the category of, these are the guys that run out after a storm and pick up the tree that fell down. When a drain is plugged, they go out there and fix it. When there's a bad accident, they're there cordoning off the road for the highway patrol and ambulance. When there's a fire, they're helping the fire department. That falls under everything else. I've had people come to us and say, well, why don't you put that out to contract? I've been doing contracts for over 30 years, and to have a good contract, you have to define it. This is an undefined world. This is do as needs be done that day, a lot of it. So it's a tough thing to contract out and it's very expensive when you contract it Why do we maintain the roads? One is we have a legal obligation to do so. And second, we are, it's how we provide for the residents of this community. Both the businesses rely on it and just people rely on it. Everybody uses the roads. I mean, there's, everybody in this room has used the roads today. I can guarantee it. That's how they got here. It's something that's used, it's just something we take for granted, but it's something we do have to maintain. That lower line there, first of all, the graph on the left-hand side, the rating's zero to 10, 10 being in excellent condition, zero, it's failed. And then on the bottom, it goes from zero years to 20 years. The bottom line shows the life of a road that is not maintained. In other words, within 20 years, they expect it to fail. This is a standard curve that's used throughout the nation. We actually get a little better life than that because we don't have that much bad weather here. Weather takes its toll hard on the roads. The upper line just tries to show if you maintain a road, you can keep it in the upper area. Those maintenance on their minor repairs are quite less, they're just a whole lot less money than if we have to get down into the reconstruction part. The cost of repairing the road increases five times if deferred. The minor repairs, this is where we're out putting seals on it. Our crews do a lot of it. The major repairs are the overlays and the reconstruction is when it's so failed, you have to rebuild the road. And if we go back a minute, let's go. This is where I like to, you know, we have many people complaining to us that we go in and we put a seal on the road and they say, that's not adequate. And they're right, it's not. But it's all we had the money to do. We're doing, we're repairing the roads as if it was a minor repair rather than an over, a complete overlay or something like that. So how are we doing Kern County road condition? If you look at, again, a road that's a 10, a 5, and a 0, we go out and rate the roads every year simply on a scale that goes from 0 to 10. We have our maintenance foremen that cover the areas, they do, and they rate them. Our system average now is a 5.1. That's not that good. We've been hanging on to wait for additional funding because we know the entire state's in the same condition, especially up and down the valley. I just was at a meeting probably three months ago with other members of San Joaquin Valley, and they're right in there between 5 and 6. It's a tough place to be. If we drop down much below a 5, we're in an area where you can't fix them again. You have to reconstruct them and the cost goes up tremendously. So why are we in this condition? Funding has remained flat since the last gas tax increase in 1994. Construction costs have gone up 300% in the last 20 years. I can't emphasize this enough. We're asked to do a job with same amount of funding, costs are up 300%. We're doing one-third less of the work than we used to. That's why we're in the condition we're in. What are we using? What funding are we using? RSTP is the federal money that has come into being. We get about 3 to 4 million a year out of it. It's only good for 1,100 miles out of the 3,300. It has to be a named, functionally classified road to be eligible to use that for. The remaining 2,200 miles of road rely on gas tax. That's the only thing. There aren't grants even to go out there for fixing them. So we get about $18 million of gas tax. 10 of it goes to labor. These are the guys that are out there and they're doing the pothole patching, keeping the vehicles running, the whole thing. 3 million on patch material, 2 million vehicle maintenance and acquisition. And people say, why do we buy new equipment or maintain it? Got to get the people around. It's a big county. And 3 million we use for matching the grants. Those grants that we get, even if we get 12, we still need about a quarter. It's about 25% they end up costing us, both for matching and for some of the labor and getting them. But that's, that's all the money we got for 2,200 miles of road. This is what doesn't work. People are always asking me why we put a thin seal down. If we took our 18 million and used, instead did 18 miles of roadway with it, in other words, we did a project that cost about a million a mile and we did 18 miles in a given year and didn't spend any money on anything else, with 3,300 miles, we'd get to each road about once every 800, 185 years. It doesn't work. That's why we don't do it. We're out there putting Band-Aids on. If we had enough money to overlay every road, we would. That's not our choice. SB 1 is currently in place. We have begun receiving the new gas tax as of January of this year. Additional revenues anticipated to be 17 million average. It ramps up over a 10-year period. Right now, we're going to anticipate this fiscal year of getting 11 million, but there is a repeal effort on SB 1. In summary, we have inherited many communities out there that are deficient according to today's standards. And people in those communities don't want to walk to school in mud. Don't blame them. I wouldn't either. They want to be improved. We chip away with that best we can with grants. We're not using the gas tax to do that. Kern County road system with an average rating of 5.1 is deficient. It's not enough, you know, it will become a liability issue for the county. We are legally obligated to maintain those roads. We have to be able to do that. We need more money. SB 1 is an answer. It's currently in place and we can make a significant improvement with it should we be able to hold on to it. With that, I'll ask for any questions of the Board?
Mr. Pope, thank you very much. Any questions by members of the Board before we go to the public? Supervisor Perez.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you for clarifying in a, I think, very clear, concise manner what SB 1 would do for us. Is that 17 million in addition to the 18 million? Is that 17 million in addition to the 18 million?
Through the chair to Supervisor Perez, yes, it is.
That's almost 100%.
It's almost double what we currently have, right?
I did not know that.
It will make a difference.
Wow. And can you, what should we expect should SB1 be repealed from your workforce and your capacity?
Through the chair to Supervisor Perez, I intend to bring back a presentation on that because it is, there's a lot of different pieces to it, and it's a very big topic. I'll be looking for some guidance from the board on how to proceed on that. It's not good, but we have different directions we might be able to go.
That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others, colleagues, before we go to the public? We're gonna ask for comment about, from the public about the roads presentation, and then in a moment, when I turn to Parks, we'll ask, see if there's any questions about Parks. Any questions from the public about roads? Okay. Looks like we have two. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Ralph Robel. It's Bakerfield Tea Party, and I was wondering if it'd be possible to get a copy of this report for our membership? Thank you. And also, what is the projected income to the county with the current economy picking up?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sir, please respond.
First of all, we'd be glad to get you a copy of the report, so you can have a look at it. As far as the economy picking up, our income to roads, as was explained here, is gas tax, and it may pick up a little bit with the economy, but we're not, we're not sales tax, we're not property tax, anything like that, so it doesn't get to the roads in that fashion. So not much, if the economy picks up here, great, but it really doesn't increase the amount of money coming to roads.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Gustavo Aguirre with Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. Mr. Pope, thank you for the presentation, very educational for us. I think just one main comment. Knowing that, you know, we have so much need of resources, funds to fix the roads, and yes, the communities that we work with are in huge need of that. At the same time, we understand, you know, that there are not enough funds, but we have SB1 that if it continues, looks like it will be one of the best options to upgrade our roads. My question to the board is, are you planning to maybe do a resolution later? I don't know exactly the procedure that you may have, but supporting to keep SB1? Because my understanding is that there is going to be on the ballot a 1% tax for unincorporated areas, which I think that will bring some money if approved, but looks like SB1 is going to bring even, continue bringing even more. And, you know, we know that, you know, the leadership, a lot of people follow what you do, so I think that will be our kind of request, you know. Will you do that to keep those, that source of income coming to our county? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Good afternoon, I'm Dennis Fox. I would like to congratulate the, I think it was really a good presentation. I liked the background, goes back a ways. With you people, it might be background and history, but with me, it's current events. But anyway.
You've lived history, huh?
Well, I was getting, I was wondering about, like, 184. Something I noticed when I was on the general plan is signage can move traffic around, and it would take traffic off of 99 and where it hits 58, and the mess there. But I was wondering, is, is it worthwhile to take state roads and use them ourselves, or are we gonna end up eventually with a mess? I'm not, you know, and the cause going back is the flooding, as was mentioned. And we get stuck with that. Should it go back to the flood cause, or is it the cause of the traffic? You know, it's, I, you know, I'm at loggerheads at that. But I think there is a, something that needs to be done for years has been the flooding of Lamont. And the fact that we did have some motorists drown on the highway, that, that, that just kinda floored me. And I've seen that on rural roads, but not on the urban ones that much. They used to in LA. But even they, La La Lands come around. The, I just wonder how to do that. And I have, you know, if we can get, is that, is that a road problem? Or is that a water, watershed problem? Or is that a water recharge problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other members of the public have a question about the Roads Department presentation? Caleb, return to the board. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Pope before we move on to Parks? Supervisor Perez, did we already deal with yours? Thank you. So Supervisor Gleason.
So I suppose now is not a good time to ask you to pave my road?
Bad time.
Tell me that, what confidence you have that the $18 million we get is properly proportioned through the state, and we're getting our fair share?
Through the chair to Supervisor Gleason, we are getting the defined fair share. It is a formula that is based on the amount collected at the pumps, and then it is divided by both population and the number of registered vehicles, and the number of lane miles you have in your county. And to undo that equation, probably would never happen. That's been in place forever, and everybody will just stand by it.
Okay, thank you. Let's, let's hear from Parks, and then we may have some other questions that come up. Mr. Hill, are you going to make the presentation? Could you give us your name for the record?
Yes, Jeffrey Hill, Acting Chief General Services Officer for General Services. And Parks. So Chairman Maggard, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about what we've done for, for Parks recently, and, and what we're, kind of the tools we use to make evaluations for infrastructure as well as condition of various components of Parks. So the basis of evaluation, hang on a second. The basis of evaluation for all Parks projects, for all projects, actually, this is all major maintenance, and we apply this to all of the major maintenance throughout the county. But in this case, we're talking about our infrastructure and Parks conditions. So they basically fall into two categories. One are user improvements. That is Parks amenity improvements, for instance, tot lots, ball field improvements, those types of things. And then there are infrastructure improvements. That's preservation of property, utility and major systems replacements, and legal mandate. Preservation of property is road maintenance, as an example, or our Parks roads and/or our parking lots. Utility and major systems replacements are HVAC systems on Parks rec buildings and that kind of thing. And legal mandate would be our efforts at maintaining ADA improvements. And your board has annually funded at least $250,000 a year of annual ADA improvements, so we apply those. So those are the, that is the basis of evaluation for those projects. The evaluation tools that we use are capital and major maintenance evaluations by Parks and maintenance staff, and that is direct observation. We're looking at systems, and we're looking at Parks amenities within our Parks, and our staff provides input for that. We have a consultant that does roofing evaluations for all of our county buildings, and included within that are Parks. ADA access evaluations, we have hired a consultant a few years ago and has provided a roadmap for ADA improvements throughout the county. Pavement condition assessments, we actually employed a previous roads engineer to go through and look at all of our, all of our county and Parks parking lots, and apply the same standard and the same level of evaluation that the Roads Department has used for determining the condition of their roads. These pavement condition assessments provide us a roadmap based on criticality, based on usage. We have begun to employ its use over the past three years, and have begun to do the maintenance, as, as Mr. Pope showed you, that maintenance is five times, at least five times cheaper than, than repair and reconstruction. And then Parks amenity evaluations, we have recently completed a study of all of our Parks in Kern County, and item by item, bench by bench, barbecue pit by barbecue pit, restrooms, all of that, done a complete evaluation based on, based, essentially, do they need, do they need replacement? Are they not working? Are they in, just need some repair? Do they need replacement? So we've done a complete evaluation of all our community parks, plus all of our regional parks. So those are the evaluation tools and methods we use to determine our replacement and our work. In the past 10 years, approximately $22 million has been invested in Parks for the total of about 109 projects. Two major projects that were needed were the rebuilding of the wastewater treatment plant out at, out at Buena Vista. That is needed. Our highest revenue generation park in Kern County is Buena Vista, and that system is in need of significant repair, and we've performed that repair actually with this year's budget recommendation, is the final piece, which is a controls piece for the wastewater treatment plant out at Buena Vista. That will have, that will have completed a complete retrofit and improvement of that entire facility for wastewater treatment. And then additional park development at Leroy Jackson Park. This was a long-term project that was started with the help of community development in some, using some funds that were part of the redevelopment agencies that was stranded with, with planning. With Laurelly's help, we were able to get that money redirected for an additional, some additional work at Leroy Jackson Park, resulting in a fantastic facility called the Petroglyph Park. Supervisor Gleason, you're well aware of, of that project. In 2017 and 2018, and our recommendation for 2018-19 are some specific investments by district. We haven't done this in the past. Last year, we started it, and it's a great effect. We have a lot of projects last year, and hopefully this year that we'll do with, with the board's input as well as community input. We expect some good, robust discussion on how those monies will be spent. There's also planned county match for grants. So we have set aside some money that we can use to leverage grants, the same as, as, as Mr. Pope has done. Have to set aside that money to leverage for some of those grants. In the case of Prop 68, we expect about a 20% match. So if we have 2 million set aside, that can turn into $12 million of actual Parks work if we're successful, if, when we're successful with grant opportunities. Park-specific improvements in 2017. We, through, through the budgeting process last year, we have, we have been able to make improvements in Delano Memorial Park, Greenfield, Rexland Acres, and Lamont, Lake Isabella, Pioneer Park, Tatchby Mountain Park, complete parking lot retrofit with ADA access at Heritage Park, and resurfacing the tot lot at Heritage Park. In Delano, we're doing complete roof replacements, building repainting of all of the kind of public access buildings there, parking lot maintenance and restriping. We've improved the ADA access to the amenities. We will be doing a new fence sample this week, and when it's approved, then the fencing will be replaced there, and a new entrance sign. Working well with Supervisor Gleason and Supervisor Catch to get those projects on the front burner and completed. At Greenfield, Rexland, and Lamont, we've got basketball court resurfacing that we're doing, tot lot and ADA resurf, the tot lot ADA resurfacing, which provides for ADA access at all of the tot lots in these, in these parks. We're putting shade structures of the tot lots. You see, that is kind of a, a thing that's being done with all tot lots. That provides comfort for the kids playing. An outdoor soccer arena was grant-funded, and that will be at Rexland. Pavement resurfacing and speed bumps and parking bumpers. We actually are a little bit ahead of the curb on that, and that project is completed at, at Greenfield. So that's been a big, a big issue for some of the people in that area, so we were able to get that done quickly. Pioneer Park, soccer field lights and baseball field lights, those will, those projects have started. Tatchby Mountain Park restroom and shower replacement is a, is a, is a vital need up there because that's also a good revenue generation project, or park. So the projects we've done for Parks, their preservation of property, so those, those, those park-specific improvements really are the user improvements. So those directly relate to the satisfaction and the, the increased enjoyment, safe enjoyment and use by the public. The preservation of property is money we still have to spend. It has a little less tangible effect directly on the public. But that's Yenis Hante Roof Replacement. That Camp Yenis Hante is, in case anybody doesn't know, is a, is a, is a camp up at Greenhorn Mountain Park in District One. Buena Vista restroom roof replacement, we went through and replaced all of the roofs at all of the restrooms in Buena Vista. Ben Austin Center Roof Replacement, Kern River Valley Vets Roof Replacement. Metro Rec Center Electric Meter Installation, that will help us divide up the electric meter costs for all of, all of the facilities out there. And where we have contracts for service, we're able to more accurately recoup the cost of, of electrical for those facilities. We're doing engineering for the Buena Vista Embankment, which is the dam. Engineering studies for domestic water separation that will, will reduce our water costs because we'll be able to use river, or lake water rather than domestic water for irrigation. Camp Okehe Domestic Water and Camp Condor Water System Replacements. We're doing pavement maintenance at Lake Isabella Vets, Kern River Campground, Leroy Jackson Park, Panorama Park, and Petroglyph Park. Those are all of the routine maintenance we should have been doing all along, and that will help us keep those facilities in good shape for longer at lower cost. And then we replaced the HVAC at Samlin Ballpark. We have great opportunities for funding coming up. We routinely, we have two Parks planners whose job mainly is to plan projects and to look for grant opportunities. We've been successful recently, did a, a good grant project out at Buena Vista, and a tree replanting project that takes into account replacement of trees in many, many facilities. Prop 68 passed. That's 4.2 billion in statewide Parks funding, of which, really, 2 billion is available for competitive grants. There will be a per capita allocation that is at least $400,000 that, that our county will get, applied for Parks improvements. If they use a strict per capita calculation, that could be as much as $1.2 million. So that will be coming down the pipe in the next probably year. And we've established a working group for grant evaluations and, and to provide for the submission of applications. That working group is comprised of people within General Services, architect, engineer, and our Parks planner. and our parks planners. So that's kind of macroscopically the efforts that we undertake. To get sort of specific briefly, Rexland Acres Park, Gustavo is here and we worked really well with Gustavo and his other kind of community partners along with Ryan Alsop. By the end of September, at Rexland Acres, we will have replaced the playground resurfacing, put in a new shade structure, new surface for basketball courts, replacing sand with wood chips, and we have dedicated staff for graffiti abatement and we focused on the South Kern projects and parks to make those improvements. At Greenfield Park, it really is about the same with the exception of the parking lot speed bumps and wheel stops, which have been completed. We're a little, again, a little ahead of the curve on that. Lamont Park is the same, including the graffiti abatement. Lamont Park is scheduled to be completed in October and so is Greenfield Park. And then Delano Memorial Park includes roof replacements, repainting of the buildings, parking lot maintenance and restriping, ADA access, new fence, new entrance sign. Recently, we've engaged with the Little League in Delano and we're making some significant improvements in the baseball fields. Some of this is operational money, is not project money, and repairing the sprinklers and controlling rodent, doing rodent mitigation. So those are the, that's the, sort of the, I guess, the long, I was going to say long and short, but that's the long and short of our efforts. We continue to make recommendations to your board and as funding is allocated or is available based on the criteria involved. And with that, I look forward to any questions you might have.
Colleagues, any questions before we go to the public? Do any members of the public have a question about our parks? Please come forward about our parks plan that we just heard.
Hi, I'm Dennis Fox again, for some reason. This has been a concern of mine. One of the things I want to talk about is Buena Vista. And I love Buena Vista and the water and the expense of treating it. They should take an untreated and dump it in the Alejandro Canal, ship it to LA. They won't take our treated water from the city, but they will take the imported water that our zones are benefit by. And we have three, we're buying that by locals and we have three local water districts didn't get their water last year. So I was thinking maybe just, but to be on a more serious bet, I think we're going to have to start preparing for tertiary treatment of the water and using it on our parks. It's just going to start getting that expensive. And the other one is about the funding. Coming up this November is a water bond, or isn't a water bond. One out of every three bucks is going to parks. It's one of those buy-in scams of Mr. Merrill's Marauders. And I was wondering if you, the one out of the $3 that goes to parks, but it's a buy-in initiative. You give this guy money and then he gives you money back by about 10. It's a scam. And what I was wondering if you've looking at, getting involved in that, giving this guy money and then you get the money back. Supposed to be for water, but water and parks is not the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Aguirre?
Gustavo Aguirre again. One clarifying question. Mr. Jeffrey, you mentioned that I think potentially the county will get about $1.2 million on, per year with the new law. That's countywide, including all cities or just unincorporated areas? Do you know?
Yeah.
Mr. Aguirre is wondering if the money that is going to come to the county, the $1.3 million that you mentioned, does it go to the entire county to be split amongst the incorporated cities as well, or is it only for unincorporated Kern County? That was your question, I think, Mr. Aguirre, right?
Yes, thank you.
Please, please come forward.
It's our understanding that that per capita is a county allocation that doesn't prohibit, we haven't, we have not seen the requirements of the grants yet, so that's a bit of an unqualified comment. In the past, there have been broad grants like this and they came to the county for county use. That doesn't prohibit any other agency or any other public agency for applying, but those per capita monies were, did come to the county for the county's use.
So we'll keep an eye on that, Mr. Aguirre, and then make that public as we know more.
Okay, thank you. We, last week, Greenfield Walking Group, Hema and myself, we were walking the streets of the neighborhoods in the Greenfield area and we went to the Greenfield Park. We were talking about the lights. Mrs. Laurelly, we were working, doing our homework on that. And we saw the new parking lot, which is great. Hema almost went out of the car and started jumping, too happy of that, so thank you for that, you know, just to acknowledge that, you know, we noticed the projects that you are moving in our communities and we hope that, you know, in your next fiscal budget, you will include some other projects in those disadvantaged communities. But thank you for, you know, what you are doing this year.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre.
Thanks.
Supervisor Perez, would you like to say something?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask you, Mr. Hill, about the security gate? Have you heard about this issue at Rexland Acres? The security gate has been, there's been problems and folks are doing donuts and do you know if that is slated to be fixed? I don't mean to thrust this on you. I didn't prepare you for this, but are you aware of that detail? And if not, I'll follow up with you after this.
I am aware of it. As far as, as far as the security gate, we removed the security gate.
Okay.
That was done in anticipation of keeping people, keeping vehicles out after hours because what they were doing is getting in and doing donuts and those types of things. It was in bad repair. We had had an arrangement with an individual, with a citizen locally, to open and close it and that represented an occasional problem. We have completed the paving, the parking bumpers and the speed bumps in that park that is completed now. So they shouldn't have a problem if someone goes in there and tries to do a donut in there now, they're going to tear their car up pretty bad, so.
Very good.
So we've made those improvements. I think the gate is less necessary at this point.
Okay, what about Greenfield? Same issue. Maybe we're confused. I'll follow up with you.
I was talking about Greenfield.
Okay, got it.
I apologize, I thought that's what we were talking about.
My apologies. Okay, very good. I'll follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public have a comment about the report we heard on parks? Just return to the board then. Colleagues, do you have any specific questions about parks? Supervisor, Supervisor Perez, Supervisor Couch?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the staff, Mr. Hill and Mr. Pope, for your presentation. It was prompted by comments that we get that maybe you're meant to urge us to do more, but in some cases they are very pointed about you're not doing anything. You're just, there's been a lack of investment. So I appreciate the fact that you are showing the public what we're trying to do. A request, could you all provide us with just a clip, a video clip of your, the presentation that we, the whole thing, your presentation, your presentation, public comments, as well as probably the, I think you were just going to provide the PowerPoint to Mr. Aguirre. Could you provide the PowerPoint to us as well?
And the clerk indicates she can get you a copy of the video.
Thank you. Additionally, the, one of the things that I've heard a lot lately is, or the discussions that we've had, it comes down to, well, it costs, there's one set of costs when you're talking about putting in a new facility, there's another set of costs when you're talking about maintaining it. A simple thing of just maintaining the park in the city of Bakersfield, for example, and in some areas of the county that are very nice, we have what's called a CSA, the city may have what's called a maintenance district. Do we have a simple explanation or a pamphlet or something like that of how CSAs work, the types of amenities they pay for, what's required, or how they come into existence? Because that's something I think the public needs to know more about. Oftentimes, I think the public thinks that we are spending money in a particular area when we are just simply applying the area, applying to that area the money that is raised, as you mentioned, on the property tax bill for a particular amenity. And it's perfectly, we are perfectly willing to provide those types of amenities in other areas, especially if they would form their own CSA. So do we have something that we can give to the public out of your department or maybe Laurelly's department?
Yeah, through the chair supervisor couch, that comes, CSAs are governed or managed through the Public Works Department and we do have a little pamphlet on it, but we'd be glad to work with anybody that has an interest in doing that. Parks are covered under CSAs, lighting districts, street sweeping, all those types, landscaping, all those types of things are covered under them.
Well, can I find it on your website? And just print it out if I need it?
We'll get it, we'll make sure it's there.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it. Do you need a, I don't see anyone else that wants to speak, so I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Second, good presentations.
Very good. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. Next is item number 28, which is a proposed Advanced Kern Economic Development Incentive Agreement. This is kind of the rollout of our Advanced Kern project. We have a success story to tell, we're excited about it and would love to hear both the perspective from staff and from our, those that collaborate with us on this from the private sector. So, Mr. Alsop, you going to talk about that first or is Ms. Hitchcock?
No, Mr. Chairman, members of the board will have Teresa Hitchcock, my office, make the presentation to you.
Very good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Maggard, members of the board. The item for you is to request your board's approval of an economic incentive agreement with L'Oreal USA Incorporated under the county's economic incentive program, Advanced Kern. As a part of the county's ongoing efforts to diversify our local economy and add new high-wage jobs, the Advanced Kern program was approved by your board in November of 2017. The proposed incentive agreement with L'Oreal meets the requirements for consideration under the county's economic incentive program. L'Oreal's proposal includes $9.8 million in capital investment at the company's leased site in the Tahone Industrial Complex and will generate 155 new jobs for Kern County residents within the first five years of operation. The average annual wage for these new jobs is approximately $45,000 per year. As a condition of this incentive package, L'Oreal is required to create 110 of the 155 jobs within the first year of operation. The incentive agreement with L'Oreal also clearly identifies the expectations of both parties and as such, the county has the ability to terminate the agreement if L'Oreal does not meet and maintain its job creation obligations. Under the county's incentive program, L'Oreal is eligible for rebates of 90% of the sales, use and property taxes actually collected by the County General Fund that are a direct result of the facility development and capital investment. The proposed incentive, proposed, is worth up to $2.3 million over the next 17 to 30 years with the duration dependent upon the actual amount of property and sales use taxes generated on an annual basis. The proposed incentive was developed based on rebating 33% of the average annual wage per job created, which is $15,000 per new job. This is on par for similarly competitive economic development incentive programs throughout the state of California. Therefore, it is recommended that your board approve the proposed agreement and authorize the county administrative officer to sign and execute the economic development incentive agreement with L'Oreal, consistent with the terms and conditions outlined in the county's economic incentive program, Advanced Kern. This concludes my remarks. However, I believe there are representatives from L'Oreal USA here today that would like to provide your board with some brief information about their company.
Thank you very much. Let's turn to who are that representatives now and hear that first and then we can hear from members of the public. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Eric Reddish. I have some prepared remarks that I will read to you, so excuse my lack of eye contact here. So, good afternoon, my name is Eric Reddish. I'm an Assistant Vice President of Distribution Operations for Salon Centric, which is a division of L'Oreal USA. I would like to start by saying thank you to the Kern County Board of Supervisors, the Kern County Administrative Office, specifically Ryan Alsop, Teresa Hitchcock and Thomas Brown for inviting me here today for this open hearing. I would also like to thank Joe Renfro from the Tahone Ranch Company for his assistance and collaboration throughout this process as well. L'Oreal is very excited about our pending move to the Tahone Ranch Park and specifically within Kern County. Recently, our operations and our business on the west portion of the United States has exploded. Our growth has been tremendous and our success is causing us to really evaluate our current position in the Los Angeles area. It's caused us to take a more strategic and decisive look at the future. Our current facility, which is in the northern part of Los Angeles County, we've exceeded our capacity and we do have an upcoming lease agreement that's ending. As a result, we've visited many facilities, we looked at various locations throughout the western part of the US and thankfully, we've decided on our Tahone Ranch site here in Kern County to locate our new distribution center. This site allows L'Oreal to immediately double our leased space capacity. It's a great location, the amenities are fantastic in Tahone Ranch and more importantly, we have the opportunity to double our size again in the next five years on the second half of the building when that is open. We are very excited as well about the vibrant workforce within Bakersfield and Kern County that we will be able to pull from to support this growth. And I'm sorry, my phone is ringing. All right, there we go. But of course, we feel strongly that we're an excellent business partner for your community. Through our sharing with beauty with all global sustainability program, L'Oreal is committed to having a positive impact on our society and the environment. Though many of our sites are currently using renewable energy credits such as our current facility in Valencia, our goal is to continue to reduce our water, our waste and our carbon emission by 60% by the year 2020. One point of note is all of our current distribution centers are landfill-free. We recycle commodities and we try to keep everything out of landfill, so that's been a positive impact that we've reached early. Additionally, we're committed to both our employees and our local communities. We do not just provide fair wages, but also we want to give back to our communities. One way we do that is we have volunteer opportunities within the local community and we do support a national industry charitable cause called Cut It Out, which provides training to licensed beauty professionals so they can provide resources and support to victims of domestic violence. We're committed to creating a facility of the future in Tahone Ranch, which includes making enhancements to the existing space and we want to build an employee population that enables us to work at the future capacities that we will need. We hope you feel as strongly about this business partnership as we do. It's truly our goal to be an employer of choice for the citizens of this county and we do want to call Kern County home for the decades to come. we do want to call Kern County home for the decades to come. Thank you.
Mr. Reddish, we welcome you and L'Oreal to our community, and you have... Your company has a stellar reputation, a great corporate neighbor in communities. We welcome that here, as well as the great jobs you guys are going to help us provide. So, we are happy to do business with you and grateful and give you a sincere welcome.
Thank you, Chairman.
We're glad you're here to partner with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see if there are any other members of the public who would like to make comment to us this afternoon about this. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Joe Renfro with Tahone Ranch Company, and just take a few moments to thank you again and your staff for the collaborative effort that's been displayed to date. It's been an extremely, I think, efficient and pleasurable process working with L'Oreal, county staff thus far in this application. Appreciate you hearing their application today. Also, want to reach out and thank you for the foresight in the work that was done last year, again with CAO's office, with the Planning Department, with Advanced Kern and the EDC and the private communities. We came together hoping, as in November of last year, when we talked about this incentive being adopted, that it could help be a magnet to draw additional businesses to the community and high-quality businesses, and I think this is kind of fulfilling that promise with L'Oreal coming before you today. So, just want to thank you again for hearing the application and the spirit of partnership in which it was given.
Well, our pleasure and thank you for the partnership we have with Tahone. Supervisor Scrivener would like to make comment.
Thank you. Any other members of the public before I go? Yeah, I... Go ahead and...
You want to wait?
Yeah, I'll wait. Yeah, I just... I punched in.
Go ahead, Richard, and then we'll have... We'll see if anybody else... Then we'll go back to the board.
Thank you.
All right, Richard, please give us your name.
Richard Chapman, President and CEO of the Kern Economic Development Corporation. Chairman Maggard, members of the board, I'm happy to be here today to strongly support the proposed Advanced Kern Incentive Agreement with L'Oreal. Our mission is to foster and create a strong, diverse economy for the region. And again, we're excited to have this project of L'Oreal, as mentioned, a stellar international reputation, actually one of the 50 most admired companies in the world. In addition, they're an economic powerhouse, over $30 billion in annual sales, 83,000 employees, and a Fortune Global 400 firm. The project in particular is an excellent candidate and fit for the Advanced Kern Incentive Program. The 155 direct jobs were mentioned, 45 indirect induced jobs. So, how does that translate into our regional economy? One way is to look at Rieger &amp; Associates analysis. Those jobs, direct jobs, mean over $11 million in residential purchases, home purchases in the community, 2.2 million auto and auto insurance, 1.5 million in recreation, restaurants, et cetera, and 1.3 million in clothing, appliances, and furniture. So, you can see how this one project resonates and creates significant economic impact in the region. In addition, this is one of the county's targeted industry sectors. In conclusion, the significant return on investment in terms of the incentive package and what future economic benefits will be reaped. The L'Oreal project will definitely help Advance Kern's regional economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. We enjoy our partnership with KEDC. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ralph Robles. And this sounds like a wonderful project, but I am concerned about several things that were not addressed. One of them is that we are a community that has had a continuous dearth of water resources, and I have not heard anything about how this would impact that condition. Another item of concern is air pollution. If they're going to be a distributive center, that means that we're going to have an increase in traffic, and that's high polluting vehicles passing through. And as I understand, Kern County has always had a problem in meeting its air pollution standards. So, how is this going to be impacted? The other thing is that you mentioned 2.3 million dollars. Now, is that 2.3 million dollars that the county is going to cough up or the county is going to receive? And with that, I appreciate someone explaining to me what those impacts are going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. The quick answer on the 2.3 million is that the project will generate new revenue to us we've never had before. From that new revenue that we're going to receive, we're going to give a portion of it back to them, as long as they hit certain marks to make sure that they're providing all the jobs and economic consequence that they projected that they would. So, it's no net dollars out of our pocket. They're paid for future dollars that they generate to us, and we give them back a portion of it. So, there's no net cost to the taxpayer after this project is going forward. It's only a net positive, not a net negative.
And the other factors, such as the air pollution and...
I'll have staff answer a question for you about air quality. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. The staff, Mr. Chairman, the staff report talks quite a bit about L'Oreal's track record as far as being more eco-friendly. Since 2005, I think they reduced their carbon footprint by 83% and their water consumption by 49%, I believe, during that same period of time. But I'd ask Ms. Hitchcock if she'd like to elaborate on that. I think that addresses some of the pollution concerns and the water resources concerns that were brought up by Mr. Robles. But as far as the tax incentive and why we do it, Ms. Hitchcock, maybe you'd like to talk about either of those two items.
Supervisor Scrivener through the chair. I would like to defer to Lorelei Oviat, who actually did the permitting for this project, and she has a lot more data on this topic.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Lorelei Oviat, Director of Planning and Natural Resources. This is the Tahone Commerce Center. This project did a full environmental impact report. It has already done a voluntary emission reduction agreement with the San Joaquin Air District. They have already paid. There are already offsets that have been created. They have limits in their specific plan on how much these businesses can actually put out for emissions. This project fully complies. Remember that this is an example of your streamlined process. There is a seven-day site plan review for all projects that come in. It has already been analyzed extensively for all of the impacts, and this is an excellent example of your boards working with developers to have 15 million square feet of industrial and commercial ready to go.
Ms. Hitchcock, anything else?
Nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Scrivener.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is in District 2 with our expand... With the expanded district lines, I might be saying that quite a bit in the future. But I'm excited, really excited about L'Oreal deciding to set up shop in Kern County. Obviously, they're a tremendous global company, have just a stellar reputation, have also made tremendous strides in some of those areas that we talked about as far as being an eco-friendly business. There's a lot of thanks to go around here, obviously. Mr. Renfro mentioned Mr. Chapman and Kern Economic Development Corporation and his staff for the work that they did on our Advanced Kern initiative. Also, the county administrative office has done a great job in bringing this forward to the board. And Ms. Hitchcock, I know you took the lead on that, so thank you so much for everything you do. But I also want to thank Tahone, because Tahone Ranch was one of those companies that came to us and said, hey, you know, we're behind the curve as far as providing incentives to companies to locate here. And it was through our collaborative process between the county, KEDC, and our corporate partners like Tahone Ranch, and there are a few others, that came up with this new incentive program that removed the caps, that looked at other neighboring counties and the types of incentives that they provide. But what I think is so great about ours, that it's all tied to job creation. You have to demonstrate that you provide a good living wage job, and you have to meet those benchmarks each and every year in order to continue to realize these tax incentives. And so, it's not just a lump sum, and then, you know, maybe you do, maybe you don't deliver. This is something you have to demonstrate that you deliver as a company each and every year. So, we know that we have accountability to the taxpayer, and we know that we're going to have an expectation for results. And if you don't produce the results, then you don't get the incentive. And so, it's my great pleasure to make a motion on staff's recommendation to approve this agreement with L'Oreal and authorize the county administrative officer to sign. Thank you to all involved.
Did you second that?
Yes.
Supervisor Gleason seconded it, then. Supervisor Perez would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Chairman. To Barry and the Tahone family, really a sincere thank you for the job creation and constant modeling on economic growth for Kern County that you are engaged in on a perpetual basis. And, you know, with the likes of Lorelei and Mike Turnipseed and Mr. Chapman and others, we are doing very substantive, material changes to the way we think about our workforce, the way we advance our workforce, and in so doing, advance ourselves and the entire well-being of this community. So, there are very few job creators like Tahone, and hats off. Thank you. Welcome, L'Oreal. You will find Kern County to be close to the beach, beautiful people, and only a couple of hours from California. So, you're in good hands here, my friend.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
The best news is of the day, of course, is that we have L'Oreal coming here with the Advanced Kern. Even better news is in the offing. We have other projects that we will roll out, and we are just thrilled with the consequence of this Advanced Kern effort and the partnership we have with the private sector. So, we will continue to provide jobs and a great, great future for our community. So, thank you all very, very much. That brings us now to the end of the posted agenda. We do want to hear from the public, if there are any members of the public here this afternoon that would like to make comment to us about any matter that is not otherwise on our agenda for this afternoon. I don't see anyone, so I would entertain a motion that we would adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion without objections ordered. Thank you very much.